I call this meeting to order. This is the Commissioners' Meeting of May 10, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. at Sussex County Administrative Center, in Commissioner's Meeting Room, 1 Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Space, here. Deputy Director Yardley.
Here.
Director Carney.
Here.
Commissioner Fantasia.
Here.
Commissioner Hayden.
Here.
A freezing moment of silence and a sweep to the flag.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number four is our public statement pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975. Adequate notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975, has been made by regular mail and email. Such notice being submitted on January 4th, 2023, from the Administrative Center for County Sussex, located at 1 Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to a filing. New Jersey Herald and Star Ledger is also posted on bulletin board maintaining the Administrative Center for public announcement and has been submitted to a Sussex County clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, please mute all electronic devices. Number five is the approval of agenda. There is one change. The first is that we are going to table item 12 to the next meeting as our minutes. We're not done yet. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
We are tabling what, 12?
12, yeah.
No, H? I'm talking about H?
No, 12, approval of minutes.
Oh, we're tabling the minutes, okay.
Wait, hold on, where are we at?
Yes, approving tabling of the minute.
What item are we on?
Understood, understood.
Right, so move. Right, oh, that's different than what I got here.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, just to clarify, we are tabling approval of the minutes because the minutes need revision.
Correct.
Thank you.
Can I get a second, I'm sorry?
Was there first, I'm sorry, first?
I was, Commissioner Hayden, first, motions. Commissioner Space, seconds. Any discussion?
Yes. So this is for approval of the entire agenda or just the tabling of 12?
Just the tabling of 12. Yes, just the tabling of 12.
This is just the tabling of 12?
Just the table.
Correct.
Understood, thank you.
Voice vote?
Discussion?
No discussion?
Discussion?
No discussion, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, carried. Number six is proclamation certificates and presentations. Excuse me, one second.
My question was, were we tabling just that?
The minutes.
The minutes, not the approval of the agenda, because there's another item.
Item five is to approve the entire agenda as written, which means anything that's on the agenda will continue tonight unless there's someone who wants to request to remove a particular item from the agenda.
Okay, so I want to remove something from the agenda.
Do you want to go back? Because I think that that was a little bit misleading.
Is there a motion to revisit item, then, item five?
Make that motion. Have a second. Dawn, we're going after five. All right. What is it that we want to discuss, Commissioner?
H. I would like to make a motion to table a resolution opposing mileage-based vehicle tax.
So this is 14H?
14H.
Do you want to remove that from the agenda?
Correct.
Or is table it, I guess?
Table it, I would like it tabled.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes, I don't know if I need a second for that. Second, thank you. Okay, I have a revised version that I wanted to share, the reason tabling it. Please take one and pass it. There has been quite a lot of, well, I don't know if a better word, political circus and hubbub, even from some members of this board alleging something incorrect about the last version. And what that was, was alluding to the fact that this resolution was somehow in support of the Transportation Trust Fund, or something along those lines. Clearly, the resolution in its original form stated along the lines that should the legislature choose to renew that funding, that electronic vehicle drivers should be responsible for paying their fair share. So the mischaracterization was ridiculous. So what I would like to do is read into the record the resolution opposing mileage-based vehicle tax and table, and then for review, to be put on the agenda at our next meeting. So reading into the record. I'm still in my, and then you can. Resolution opposing mileage-based vehicle tax.
Can you speak up a little bit, please?
Yes. Whereas the Murphy administration and Democrat legislative majorities have decided to subsidize expensive and dangerous electric vehicles, EVs, with our tax dollars. And whereas Governor Murphy is attempting to prohibit the sale of new motor vehicles that operate on traditional fuels such as gasoline and diesel without approval of the legislature and/or the voters and without the constitutional or statutory authority to do so. And whereas owners of EVs already receive major taxpayer subsidies in the form of state and federal tax credits and an exemption from the state sales tax. And whereas in anticipation of a state-forced 100% EV future, unelected bureaucrats are scheming to impose a mileage-based vehicle tax that would force invasive black boxes in all vehicles in order to charge a tax based on the miles traveled in every vehicle. And whereas these black boxes would not only raise taxes on all vehicle owners, but also violate a vehicle's owner's right to privacy. And whereas in 2022, New Jersey, as part of a consortium of 17 states in Washington, D.C., called the Eastern Transportation Coalition, is testing a mileage-based vehicle tax for potential future implementation. And whereas the decision to begin this testing was made by bureaucrats with no legislative or public input. And whereas the Sussex County Board of Commissioners recognizes that our residents have some of the longest commuting times and distances in the state, and is extremely concerned that a ban on traditionally-powered vehicles and implementation of a mileage-based vehicle tax would have a negative effect on our residents. Now therefore be it resolved by the Sussex County Board of Commissioners that the Board opposes a ban on vehicles powered by traditional fuels such as gasoline and diesel. And whereas the Board is opposed to the implementation of any mileage-based vehicle tax and the forced use of vehicle black boxes, whether implemented on the state, regional, or national level. And whereas the Board is opposed to any new motor fuels taxes and urges the legislature to act to reduce them by compelling operators of EVs to pay their fair share. And whereas the Board calls upon the Governor and the legislature to eliminate taxpayer subsidies for EVs and look at non-intrusive ways to make EV owners pay their fair share without negatively affecting the vast majority of commuters and taxpayers in Sussex County. This resolution is also in support of Assemblyman Parker Space, who is introducing legislation to be discussed down in Trenton and reviewed to much of the same.
Just so I can understand, protect the record here and understand where we are. So we're on the item to approve the agenda, there's a motion to approve the agenda, there's a request.
Can you speak a little louder, please?
Yeah, sure, I'm sorry, I'm thinking and staring down, I apologize. So I just want to try to understand procedure, where are we at? So there's some, we're on item five, there's a motion to approve the agenda, there's a request by Commissioner Space, excuse me, by Commissioner Fantasia, second by Commissioner Space to read, move item 14.
H.
Which is a resolution that was previously published so that you could replace it with the resolution that you just read, which you're, which would then be placed on the agenda at a subsequent meeting and can be considered at another time. So we're not really considering anything tonight, you just want to bump it, but give everybody an opportunity to understand exactly what it says.
Correct, and being for the sake of the public to be able to read it into record prior, because we don't release the documents prior to the next agenda meeting, and that's too short of a window for people to have time to review.
Understood. Are you done, Commissioner?
I am, thank you.
Commissioner Yardley, you have something?
We have a process by which these things generally go to the agenda meetings. So now we're, we've two times bypassed that. So we, in the past, when we have rushed these things, and I'm glad that there's an opportunity tonight to look at this, we run into problems. So is it going?
Mr. Yardley, we can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We have a process by which these things are placed before the agenda, that the Commissioners get to look at. And that's not what happened here, that's not what happened last time. I'm asking the Director, as the person that sets the agenda here, is it okay for all of us, if we have a resolution, to bring it in and read things into the, into records? Is that going to be the process?
Absolutely not, and I don't think that's what's happening here. So this, this original resolution was put out on Friday for the public to read it and digest it. But Commissioner Fantasia is saying she has changed it since. She's pulling it, we're going to give everybody ample time to review it, put it back on the agenda for our next meeting. So it gives you two meetings.
I'm not talking about, I'm talking about originally, it was, it was brought up, read here.
But it was never, we never motioned anything. It was just brought up a new business.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
All right.
But I agree with you 100%, yes, there's no, we should never be putting resolutions for the, for, and not give the constituents and the Commissioners enough time to review.
Well, I'm saying.
I agree, I agree. I don't think anybody is crazy here.
Just to clarify, two meetings ago, right, it was read, there was one read into new business. It was not an action item. It was read into new business.
Correct.
For public conversation.
Correct.
Right? The revised version after that was introduced traditionally at the agenda meeting. Were you at the agenda meeting this past Monday?
Yeah.
Okay, so then you're aware of that. And then now, for this evening, I made the motion, being the author, to table and for the benefit of the public, read the revised version, and I want no action on this tonight.
Correct.
So I fail to see how this flies in the face of any procedure.
Understood. So are we all good? Anybody else? All right, so I guess we're going to go back. So now you're just calling, basically a vote, there's a vote on the motion to approve the agenda with item 12, which is the minutes and.
Remove.
And 14H removed.
14H removed.
All right, have a motion.
Well, you got the motion, we just need a vote at this point. Motion's been made. One second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Director. All right. You're on six. We are on six. Proclamation, certificates, and presentations. We have a lot tonight. A is a proclamation, May is Older Americans Month, and Commissioner Space will present this at the Older American Day celebration on May 19. B is proclamation, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and Commissioner Fantasia will present this to Ingrid Vaca Bolero, if I said that right, from the Mental Health Task Force.
Prior to reading this and presenting it, I just wanted to share some great news that came directly related to this. And this came from Christine Florio from Health and Human Services. She wanted to share with us that the 30-year program of school-based youth services, that's the mental health program that's located in each county, will continue. Past this June of 2023, the program will continue to be funded in the Sussex County Technical School. There are no longer plans to eliminate the funding for this programming under the state's budget, as Governor Murphy had previously announced, due to the intense support and outcry amongst Commissioners, legislators, school administrators, educators, and community members. Senator Doug Steinhardt, thank you also for bringing attention to the needs of small and rural school districts, and an article that was published about this as well. We know how important post-pandemic mental health in schools are. We've seen some local school districts try to pull mental health supports, and that's very problematic. So this is excellent news, this Board was very loud about it, and I'm glad that we were heard and that program for mental health for students stayed intact. So the proclamation reads, "Whereas mental health is an essential part of overall health and well-being, and whereas mental health is defined by the World Health Organization as a state of well-being in which every individual realizes his or her own potential, can cope with the normal stresses of life, can work productively, and is able to make a contribution to her or his community. And whereas mental illness is a leading cause of suffering and disability that is exacerbated by stigma and discrimination. And whereas one in six youth aged 6 to 17 years, and one in five individuals aged 18 and over, will experience a diagnosable mental health disorder each year. And whereas the community collectively recovers from the negative effects of the pandemic, there are many children, teens, and adults who are left with debilitating mental health symptoms in need of compassion, support, empathy, and care. And whereas increasing awareness of mental health and the importance of mental health prevention, intervention, and treatment services can encourage those who are suffering to reach out for help. And whereas the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners adopted and supports the campaign to change direction, which is a national model to reduce stigma and change the culture of mental health so that all those in need receive the care and support they deserve. The campaign supports the inclusion of mental health into overall health, and encourages individuals to know the five signs of emotional suffering and support others to reach out for help when needed. Now therefore be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Sussex County Mental Health Board, the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners hereby officially designates May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Sussex County by order of the Board of County Commissioners. Chris Carney, Commissioner Director, Herbert Yardley, Deputy Commissioner Director, Dawn Fantasia, Jill Space, and William Hayden, Commissioners."
Congratulations. Is there anything you'd like to say?
Yes, I will, if I could, just a minute.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you so much, I appreciate your time, you know, with this proclamation, and I also wanted to let you know that last week we did kick off Mental Health Awareness Month with an event called Embrace the Elephant in the Room. It was an amazing event that took place at the County College. We collaborated with the Fine Arts Department and Bridgeway Behavioral Health, and we brought in a consumer with lived experience. She's an artist, her name is Maureen Slamer, and she has her art on display. Her mission and her passion is to let everyone know that even if you have a diagnosable mental health illness, that you can live and you can prosper, and that she wants to de-stigmatize mental health. So her artwork is at the college through July. Please, I invite you to come and take a look at it for your friends, your family, it is open to the community. It will be on display at the Performing Arts Center in New Jersey. Thank you so much.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Proclamation C is a proclamation recognizing May 6th to 12th as National Nurses Week, and Commissioner Yardley will present this to Chelsea Choma.
Chelsea, are you here?
It's a real pleasure, because of the hard work that nurses do, especially during COVID. I said, our nurses, they take simpler work during COVID, and they did a great job under extremely difficult situations. Just really happy, thank you for helping with that. We read this proclamation. Whereas in 1993, American Nurses Association declared May 6th as National, which recognized diversity of profession. Whereas nursing is the nation's largest healthcare professional with more than 4.2 million registered nurses. National Nurses Union, either individuals, employers, and other healthcare professionals, including leaders, among others, recognize the critical positive contributions of emergency registered nurses. Whereas, though their dedication, skill, expertise, and service deliver an extended array of healthcare services, including primary and preventative care, utilize your skills in a variety of our healthcare system, and their knowledge and skills have increased and progressed with new technologies and methods of treatment. Whereas nurses have experienced unprecedented challenges over the past year due to COVID-19 pandemic. Nurses of all stages of education, experience, stepped up to and served with many other disciplines, and ensured equitable and sufficient access to testing, vaccination, and education during the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas although the pandemic, nurses have demonstrated courage, perseverance, leadership, compassion, and quality care for individuals in need. And whereas the demand for qualified registered nurses is greater than ever to meet the increasingly complex needs of healthcare consumers in need, the federal government projects that more than 203,000 registered security positions will be created each year from 2021 to 2031. Whereas Sussex County recognizes the indispensable contributions nurses make to the health and well-being of Sussex County residents, enabling the county to be better help your place to live and work. Now therefore be it resolved, which, and along with the American Nurses Association, the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners hereby officially designate May 6th to 12th as Nurses Week in Sussex County. Encourage all residents to celebrate the accomplishment of all of our registered nurses and their efforts to improve our healthcare system, not just during this week, but at every opportunity throughout the year by order of Chris Carney, Commissioner Director, and Dr. Stephanie Commission, Dawn Fantasia, William Hayden, Jill Space, Commissioners. Thank you.
Chelsea, would you like to say anything?
So on behalf of the Office of Public Health Nursing, I want to thank you for this proclamation. Tomorrow, May 11th, marks the end of the COVID-19 three-year-long public health emergency. So for many of us, tonight feels like the night before graduation, or the end of a marathon. However, although the emergency ends tomorrow and the marathon should be over, we as a health department unknowingly signed up for the Ironman competition. Our work now of recovery from the pandemic and rebuilding trust from our community members begins. We will now move forward with lessons learned and take that information to enhance our public health response and revise our plans. So nurses, in an attempt to pull the positive out of an otherwise bad situation, please know you cannot buy the type of education you all just received over the past few years. Although it was stressful and exhausting, you all gained valuable experience. Experience in having worked through a pandemic. Experience executing plans that were otherwise on paper. Experience vaccinating thousands of individuals. Experience figuring out ways to fulfill all the needs of our community while working under the constraints of the pandemic. So although tomorrow I will not be able to award you with a diploma, additional credentials after your name, or a crummy 26.2 bumper sticker, please take that experience gained and use it to further enhance the work we do for the public every day. Our priorities may have shifted, but the goal was and is always the same, to keep the public safe and healthy. So if the nurses here could stand up, I want to offer you a heartfelt thank you, and from one nurse to another, happy nurses.
Well, thank you all, thank you, Chelsea. Dee, from Marty Keane, it's the annual Lake Apacong Foundation presentation. Marty, come on up.
We're going to try to keep this real quick, because it's a good news story that I think could be tweeted. We have just some, you can follow along if you like.
Thank you.
And it's just kind of a quick, a state of the lake. Ron Capon, I kind of, we sent him to you, so. So thank you for hearing us, and we really do appreciate all the support we always get from Sussex County. But now we're going to keep it off the column. Let me introduce, Colin, I know you know some of us, Colin Lyons, the Administrator for the Lake Apacong Mission. There is the executive director for Lake Apacong Foundation, and you can see me forever, so I'm the chair of Lake Apacong.
Yeah, so kicking it off with the aquatic reef harvesting on Lake Apacong, this is a part residence that's really beneficial around the lake because it means navigable waters around the lake. And for us, maybe what our residents don't necessarily think about is the nutrient removal process that happens during the week harvesting. So we're going to be running a whole program this, this season. It's year two, since we took it over from the DEP, and that'll be starting next week to safety training around the water. And looking forward to a good save season. For our harmful albumin efforts, we've had some concern over the warm winter and the lack of ice this year on the lake, so that just means more water, more water to contribute to help keep them settling. So we're looking, we received a lake restoration grant through DEP for a million dollars. We're looking at a lake-wide album treatment. You know, some of you live on lakes, since we understand what an album treatment does, but for those who don't, it's just stuff. It manages the nutrients that are in the sediments of the lake, so it can help mitigate some of those harmful albumins on the lake and the aquatic reef. So that's what we're looking at for this season to help with the harmful albumins, and also our ongoing stormwater projects that we're doing through other grant projects, I will hear about a little bit later.
Hi, thank you. Given us some lake-wide projects, one of the things we're looking into this year, the lake-wide aeration system on Lake Apacong. There are a few smaller American systems present available in Apacong as, as one of their few beach clubs that have different types of systems. This would cover about 900 acres of the lake, so a very large chunk of the lake, and we have a private donor who's actually put up some funds to help execute this program. Currently in the very beginning stages, stages of this program, are really trying to figure out what type of aeration system would be the best for Lake Apacong, noting that there are different fisheries on the lake, different users, high amount of boating traffic on the lake. So we've been conducting meetings with all four mayors of the towns that surround Lake Apacong and the DEP, the both the foundations and the commission. And we just received a Highlands Council grant, the DDP Engineering Study, which would really tell us what type of system is best for Lake Apacong, and we're working towards implementing a aeration system in 2024, and just the aeration system to help manage the nutrients in the lake that would cause water pollution as well. Put your own party for our next.
Most of you that know Mayor Francis know that aeration is like so near and dear to him, so he's like thrilled with this. And I have to say, the two donors, the couple that stepped forward to fund this are from Lake Apacong, so.
Those, aeration is very expensive, too.
You know, I, I, yeah, I mean, we're talking someone probably in the $2 to $3 million range to do something like this, but it's really neat, the technology is way above my head, but it fuses here, right into your water.
Yeah, we, that, right, exactly. I think that's working, huh?
This, this year will be a trial year for we understand.
Right, yes, it will be, yeah, yeah.
And you know, you wonder why sewers for Jefferson are on the list in front of Sussex County, but that's because if you ask all four mayors around the lake, that would probably be the single most important thing you could do to improve water quality on Lake Apacong. It would be finish the sewers that were started a while ago, and Jefferson is one township in Lake Apacong that has no sewers, and it has about 40% of the houses, so it's a really good deal. And unfortunately, when all the other towns were working toward it, their town didn't feel it was necessary. And you know, in ensuing years that have passed, it's gotten harder and harder to get that kind of money. So there is a path forward finally, through some of the federal funding that poured down to try to grab a little bit of, to make this project work. And right now where we are is, here again, we're undertaking engineering work. And you know, Representative Searle put it forward as one of her community-funded projects. You know, in the past, the community-funded projects, or intermarxes, we used to call them, they've all been funded. We expect it to get a little tougher this year with the Republican House. However, everybody seems to feel well that since this funding would come through the Army Corps of Engineers, it's a really solid program that will, I think, so it's a really good news project for the lake to pick that off. Something I have to tell you. And something I have to tell you, I never saw, thought I'd see in my lifetime was, you know, a real meaningful effort to put sewers in part of the lake, so good news. And while we're talking about that, you can see, you know, we continue something that Ron's real familiar with, we started when he was the Administrator in Lake Apakon, which is we get to four mayors together just to talk about lake issues and it works very well. And in basically every quarter, we get together with DEP, you know, some good meaningful discussions. And, you know, it's, yeah, it's not that easy. But it has been making really good progress. And I do feel like, you know, I think everybody here on my side would say good things have come out of it. And so it's moving forward. Lake-wide, this is not just for Lake Apakon, but funding for all public lakes in the state. Two years ago, we were getting legislation approved. Senator Orojo was key to that. And I have to say, this time around, Senators Orojo and Assemblyman Space and Work are all sponsors of the new legislation. It basically, two years ago, we got $10 million for public lakes, a lot of which came into Sussex County. About 1.7 million wound up coming into Lake Apakon. And it was still, with all that money that came down, $20 million more on requests from public lakes than was money available. So we've come back this year and asked for an additional 17 million. As I said, we have strong support from the 24th to 25th and 26th. And we also have sponsors from around the state, from even Democratic parts of the state because they have lakes too. And it's really good to kind of build the consensus on this because where the shore gets a lot of money, lakes have never gotten funding. And it's really been a hard thing for a lot of communities to manage their lakes when you don't get any money to do it. So it's going through and you know, we try to just keep building. I have to say, just in one place, we're Representative Payne, who's our other, you know, he has three or four towns of the lake now, has been very closely with us since he's come to office, all good news. And we've teamed together with National Muskinga Con Water Jet, the Colleton Develler River, all those kinds of things to kind of build. And maybe we're a little more important than it is.
Great, and part of the work that the foundation does is community building around the lake and education. We have our floating classroom on the lake, which is a 40-foot pontoon boat that we take children out to teach them about lake ecology. And we kicked off this year's field trip programs on Monday. And we have 1,600 students from 32 schools in six counties across the state coming out to Lake Apakon. Last year, we had 1,300 students, so the program is continuing to grow. And hopefully Monday, we'll just need to get a second boat to get more students out there. And the students on the field trip program learn about lake ecology, river ecology, forest ecology, and we have a model of a landscape that shows them how their actions on land can impact our water qualities called the envirostate. And if any of that sounds like fun and anybody here wants to experience it themselves, we offer public cruises on the floating classroom on Mondays, starting the first Monday after 4th of July and running through later day. And anybody can come out and enjoy some time on the lake. We also restarted a shrink wrap recycling program at Lake Apakon this season. There had been a program a number of years ago, but due to some grant funding, the program had been discontinued. We're really closely with all four towns around the lake to find a company that would be willing to accept the shrink wrap recycling. They're based out of Pennsylvania, but they're providing the service for free to the lake. There's a lot of coordination online, we're trying to figure out how to make this happen. So we are, once again, collecting shrink wrap. We've filled four containers, they're 40-foot, 40-yard container of shrink wrap from the lake, so we're just preventing all of that from going into our van fields, which is.
And it also saves them marine money because they don't have to pay to take it away now. So that was an easy way to get them hooked into it.
And then a couple other fun community events that the foundation is doing, coming up, well, first one we're not doing, but the Hudson Farm Walk, close to the Hudson Farms, is actually this Saturday, May 13th. It's a great way to get out and support some local charities all based in Lake Apakon without actually having to spend any of your own money. What they do, if you go on a hike, at the end of the hike, they give you a dollar for every gear you are, so if you're 30, you get $30. If you're 90, you get $90. And you get to put that in the bucket for the charity of your choice. And then the Hudson Farm Club actually writes the check themselves in that amount that's given. So if anybody wants to come out and support the foundation, we'll win those charities.
And it's completely free to come on Saturday to participate and you get the free. And we want her to come because she has.
You make a few bucks here. Can you just make sure I get the information? Free lunch too, I mean, hey.
The next event, which is in two Saturdays, is a big one for us. It's the Lake Apakon Block Party. I'm going to actually ask Lee Moreau, he's the planner of the block party for us.
If I may just do that a couple years, just make it quicker. You'll be yelling into your ear. On May 20th, the Lake Apakon Foundation hosts a block party at Lake Apakon State Park. And we fill it up from fill it to post, there's a lot of folks here. We're starting the calendar for May 20th, goes from 10 to 4. Please stop by, it really has been Marty's vision, one of his wingmen. It's pretty stable now. And we need 3,000 folks to show up. And we get the support of all the four mayors, as Marty has said before. So May 20th from 10 to 4, it's a celebration of everything the foundation has accomplished and it's 10 years to have accomplished a lot, as you can see from those trucks. And it's not just Lake Apakon, it's well. And the second thing I'd like to mention very quickly is, once the block party is rolled, I put my captain Lee hat on and run the Miss Lotte Boat on the lake. And we salute veterans on June 24th. And Lake Apakon was the first town out of the four to actually close down half of their bridge so that the public can come out in big numbers and salute veterans. So hats off to Lake Apakon for starting that. Your peers that they have a bridge have now followed your lead. And we have a great, we're two great cruises with tremendous community support. So if you can find a way to the River Sticks Bridge, or Brady Bridge, if you want to get out of Sussex, please come and just give us a salute on the boat. There's all kinds of information about it, on Lake Apakon cruises. Everything we just mentioned about the block party is on the Lake Apakon Foundation website. And thank you for your support.
And then just the last two events listed here is on July 20th is the Foundation's Annual Gala, so fundraise address. And on October 1st is our Lakelook, which is a bike paddle run. It's a great opportunity to get people out recreating around the lake and run a 5K, paddle 2.5 miles, or bike 20, 40, or whoever wants to bike 60, but some people tear 15 miles out there, all the way around the lake.
And I'll just say, at the gala this year, our kind of reason to be Senator Orojo.
That's great, thank you. Okay, so these are all lakes, but Lake Apakon has very dense population. It causes excess nutrients and also bacterial contamination in the water. So in trying to manage our goose populations, the commission started working with USDA this year on an egg add-on program. So far, we've added about, say, USDA has added about 140 eggs. So that's, you know, that many nutrients that aren't being added to the lake for good outcomes. Also on our grant work, looking at what we're doing in Lake Apakon specifically, since that's Sussex County's side. I mean, Ron knows a lot because he really, he's already well versed on it. Whitney Park Stormwater Command's implementation, so we're moving forward with that. The engineering was through a grant with the Highlands Council. And then the implementation will be through a grant with the National Fish and Fish Commission. We're doing a stormwater outfall cleanout this year during the five-foot drawdown. Okay, so every five years, we do a five-foot drawdown and the foundation puts on a lake-wide cleanup work for that.
November 4th.
November 4th this year. And also during that, we'll be removing sediment deltas that accumulate in the lake from the outfall locations where some stormwater comes in unfiltered. So we'll remove that so it doesn't just keep getting pushed further and further into the lake. Continuing our biochar filtration installation, so that's just, you know, the type of ocean trail it's going to remove, retransferred to the lake. And we're also conducting a test study just to identify habitat on the lake for trout and try and conserve those areas.
So Colleen, is it still true that every three geese is the same as one failed septic system?
That's what our environmental.
So that's a little trivia for everybody in the room. We talk about geese and management, three of them is one failed septic system on the lake. That's how potent they are.
And if there's any questions?
Well, thank you for what you do. It's obviously important to keep our lakes clean.
Thank you.
Take care. All right, moving forward, our next presentation is from Tammy Horstfield from the Sussex County Chamber of Commerce, and this is a tourism update.
All right, first of all, I can bear gifts. Thank you. And here's the last stuff that I'm going to talk about tonight. See how many we have here.
Thank you.
Lots of reading here.
Thank you. All right, which clicker works for that? Oh, is this a trick?
I would do the mouse. I had you set up.
Well, first of all, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to come to yours. For most of you, you know, I'm Tammy Horstfield, I'm President of Sussex County Chamber of Commerce and a number of other agencies. But I'm here tonight also as the president of the Destination Marketing Organization for Sussex County. It's the tourism entity that is designated by the State New Jersey Division of Travel and Tourism. Now, a couple of you have seen this presentation, so bear with me on that. But I thought it was important that, I used to do this every year for the commissioners, known as the pre-holders in the past, and then of course COVID kind of got in the way. So I want to get back to giving you an update on all that we do in Sussex County to market the great things we have here to live, work, and play. So very quickly, take you through some of my slides and I'm going to learn how to use this because I'm not really sure. Oh, it is. Okay, well, the first slide was important because you're going to see it all in here. And I'm going to be conscious of your time here tonight, so. Taking a look at the Skylands, it is the brand of Sussex County, the Sussex Skylands. It is known by visitors especially across, not just the state of New Jersey, but around the world. And I say that sincerely because we also promote internationally as well as domestically. So I'm going to talk a little bit about that as we move forward. Tourism stats, this is just about Sussex County. Sussex County has grown dramatically through the years. You'll see a dip in 2020, that was COVID. We did see however, an increase like no one else in the state of New Jersey saw in regard to people, visitors coming here in the overall picture. We are well on our way back and the 2022 number will show significant increases as we get that information. So where do we get this information? The state of New Jersey produces this information through their research company. So these are numbers that come specifically out of that. In 2021, there was direct tourism jobs of 5,088 jobs here in Sussex County, which was an increase of 14.9%. You can see those numbers here, direct impact were 5,088. And when you look at indirect, the total indirect for tourism, meaning other people who provide services for tourism-based businesses, there are 60, over 65, almost 6,600 employees. And the direct share of total employment is 11.2%. I am very proud to say that the bed tax from 2019 to 2022, number one in the state was Sussex County in the way of percentage of growth. And that's because of outside activities. People were able to go outdoors, they stayed here, they felt comfortable, especially through COVID and such, and those numbers grew dramatically. Again, tourism research, it comes out of tourism economics, it's through the state of New Jersey. And they, available yearly is their total, their tourism impact studies and their visitor profile studies. So we have all of that here. We continue to monitor that. We work hard with the state of New Jersey to market Sussex County and we are the lead in regard to that, our organization. Any information or request for information in this side of the state, come directly to our office, the state doesn't handle them. And I'll talk about that through some of the social media and such that we do. Social media and digital display ads, we have sponsored content with New Jersey Advanced Media. That includes everything from their TV, as well as a lot of their other banner advertising, online advertising and such. Target email and contact media, social media and banner ads with New Jersey Family and New Jersey Monthly Magazine, just to name a couple of them that we do. Those we do a lot of work with. Lead generation for visitor guides requests are travelguys.com, that's a travel guide group. Half-page ad in the New Jersey Travel Guide, which is in your packet, okay, for you to take away. And that's the New Jersey Division of Travel and Tourism's print and online. Full-page ad in the campground and outdoor lodging vacation guides. Full-page in the Lake Apakon guide, it's a perfect segue with Lake Apakon. Very involved with Lake Apakon, you know, our largest freshwater lake in New Jersey. We're very active with them as well, actually on both sides of the lake, not just one. Also in New Jersey, and then some of our local events, and New Jersey Best Magazine, we've had a lot of success with, we've done a lot of articles, not just ads. We also produce an annual rack card, which is in your packet. It's all the major annual events that happen each year. We distribute them annually to date, to date this year. We have shared 7,500 of them. And we typically do it up between 10,000 and 15,000 a year, and we go to the rack cards. They're distributed at trade shows, which I'll talk about in a bit, visitor guide requests, and at the visitor centers throughout the state of New Jersey. We ship, just shipped 15 boxes of state-approved literature to the welcome centers throughout New Jersey. They include everything with event cards, visitor guides, and our trail maps, which I'll talk about as well. We fulfill 3,000 plus to date of visitor guides and we typically also send out at least between 8,000 and 12,000 visitor guides depending upon the year. We also created a new portable display to make it easy for us at travel shows because we do many of them, and I'm going to talk about those travel shows. We do both consumer shows as well as travel, trade, and media shows. So we do them all, the gamut. So we're at a lot of those shows and we continue to grow that database that we have so that we can reach all of our consumers around the world. These are the travel shows we did this year already, well, actually from the end of 2022 through now. The New York International Travel Show at the Javits, we have our own booth there for Sussex County. The Boston Travel and Adventure Show, I was with the state of New Jersey, one of five people at their booth. We're also at the New York Travel and Adventure Show in January, a different group. The Philadelphia Flower Show in March, I spent three days there marketing Sussex County. And I'm getting ready to leave for International Pawa, which is IPW. It's the largest international show in the world. And you would say, well, why would you do that? The reason we do that is because we're there with the state of New Jersey. People can go to New York and then they need somewhere else to go, excursion. We're the excursions. They come here, they spend their time here, they spend their money here, and then they go back. So that's a little bit about what we do. We also attended the AAA Pittsburgh Travel Show. We're a part of the Washington DC Show and the Chicago Travel Show. In your packet are some of our materials that we use and we've used. Our visitor guide, this is our annual event rack card. And we also have some of our advertising, and I just wanted to give you kind of a sense of some of the things we do. We're all in this when we do tourism. We have everything from getting our outdoor on and working to show the recreational or soft recreation, as they call it, in our area. We also have a lot of outdoor adventures, including camping and hiking and biking and fishing and all kinds of activities, even winter activities. We're fortunate, we have four seasons of tourism here and we can market that year-round. We also do other marketing on some of the local stuff that are here. You know, the food trucks that are here, the Skylands, we work at them. We advertise in some of those publications. And the German Christmas Market, the fair. We're there actually with the county of Sussex as partners. We were asked to kind of, I'll say it again, bring it to life, if you will. And we have brought it to life with tourism and showing off what we have here in Sussex County, which I think is pretty great. We also have our magazine, which highlights many of our tourism attractions. We're just getting ready now to start a new magazine this year. Yay, finally we're able to do that again. So we just finished a resource and lifestyle guide, which included tourism as well as business. Now we will do a full magazine and that will be produced and ready, I hope, for the fair. So we're moving forward with that. We also have a lot of press coverage. We're very involved with all of these entities. We are in the New Jersey Monthly Book of Records. We have several, stakeholders in the county are part of it. Jersey's Best, Mainline Today, New Jersey Monthly, New Jersey Family. We're also very involved with bloggers and influencers and articles that are written in various publications, The Wall Street Journal, a lot of specific kinds of magazines and such. a lot of specific kinds of magazines and such. But we really work hard to get all of that information out. And people can come to our site, they can download stuff, they can send us an email. We also work really hard to get that out. Matter of fact, this week alone, we sent out over 300 travel guides to those who requested it, including trail guides. We continue to partner with the county to promote countywide tourism, and that's what I talked about in regard to some of the things we've brought to life in the past at the fair and other places. And that's our partnership with the county, and we really do work hard with the county to do that. We're good partners in promoting tourism. Rails and Trails, we have given out over 100,000 trail guides, that's our largest amount of publications we send out annually. Our trail guide is very, very popular. And the chamber not only goes as far as doing that, but we also put up all the, all of the kiosks that you see in front of the state parks now, they're the chamber thing for us. We were the ones who put those up. Matter of fact, I'm going to finally get some credit on it and put some placards on them, I haven't done that in the last eight years. We're just too busy just providing them. But now we're going to put that on there, we have, I just ordered two more, that will go up. And we also put two bike maintenance stations in last year. So if people have flat tires, or they need, you know, they need something done, they can fix them there. So we were able to provide those too. So we continue to do that. We have a trail cleanup too, we have an informal maintenance agreement with the trails, with the state park rather than, and we clean and clear the trails. We have one coming up, I think it's June 7th. And we take a half a day, the business community comes out, we clean, we clear, we paint, we cut, we do whatever they need. We're installing signs, actually, is another piece of that. So all of that comes together. I also have certification in tourism, I'm a certified destination management executive. I put my time in, I have to recertify every four years. I did that, I was one of the first classes through the United States Travel Association, kind of a good housekeeping seal of tourism. I continue those credentials and continue to work to keep up with my education. So this is kind of giving you a look at who we are. We're glad that you get your outdoor on, let me say, here in Sussex County, that's Sussex Skylands, New Jersey's great north west. So with that, I'm going to open up a few other questions, but I just wanted you to be aware, so often we do things and we never tell anybody. I thought it was important, at least for you to know, all of the things we do on the tourism side of things. And we're really vested in that, it's so important to us in our county, and that's our balance of live, work, and play. So we're going to continue to do that, and just thank you for your support through all of it. And any questions?
I have a comment.
Sure.
I've known you a long time, since I've been worked here and stuff, and you still have the same energy from when you started to now, and enthusiasm just comes through.
I still love what I do. That matters.
That shows, and I want to say, if you really have not interacted with Tammy, she's a hard worker, gets the word out there, and we're fortunate to have her.
Well, thank you, celebrating 33 years this year.
And I can tell you, Frankfurt Township Committee will be putting Tammy on Recognition Drive. All the work that she's done, and she was a Frankfurt resident, so June will be Tammy's month.
We all do for the recognition we do because.
Understood, but you.
Number one's my job, number two, I love.
You deserve it, so for the month of June, Tammy's name will be on Recognition Drive by the school, so, thank you.
What I wanted to say is, being one of the liaisons to, to your organization, I remember when I first got on the board with Josh Hertzberg at the time. And we went down to an expo in Atlantic City. And let me tell you, Monmouth County, boy, do they like to steal the show. So they had everything up and about, I mean, Monmouth County, they are the gold, and they do a phenomenal job, right?
Yeah.
You know what, I'm going to take a few pictures of some of this. I'm going to send this to my little friends down there, because this is very amazing. Yes, I was going to say, this took what was happening five years ago, and all of this together just really elevates it just to another level, like, I'm just so proud of the work you do, I'm proud of it.
Thank you, and I will say, congratulations to my staff. I have one full-time staff member and two part-part-time staff members, that's my staff. So we do all of this, including the chamber, the economic development partnership, and tourism. And you know what, I can't do without you, they're great.
Yeah.
So, kudos to them.
I'll echo what everyone else has said, you know, I've seen, I mean, I've been around in the tourism business for over 30 years, and I've seen how much you've done, and we appreciate it.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Tammy, if it's possible to send a copy of your presentation, if you can email it to me, so we can make a part of the record. All right, thank you.
Perfect, all right, Tammy, take care.
Oh, yeah.
Either that, or we will have a copy of it.
I just, thanks, Tammy. I just want to change something around a little bit, Horizon is here. So if you guys are all right with it, I'd like to let them do somewhat of a presentation, and then maybe, and then maybe ask, open to public for some, some short questions, if you guys are willing to take that. You guys all right with that? Herb, you all right? Good, okay, you guys want to open up? Anna, you want to start, or Tom?
Well, I have with me my manager, Richard Burton, not the real Richard Burton.
I don't think he'd be here if he didn't.
And Tom Giordano from Brown and Brown. We had a meeting today internally at Horizon regarding the system upgrade for all of the retirees for the county of Sussex. And we are still in line with resolving everything and having everything completed and member-free, I should say, with no member involvement, well within the next 60 days. So we are on target, and I know our target was in June, so we're well within that timeframe. We have corrected the system to have all of the claims processed automatically, so there's no longer any intervention that is necessary on the retirees' behalf for any of their claims as of March 13th. So that is going to continue until the final step, which is to pay the providers directly. Right now, the members are being paid on behalf of their claims. And in June, that will all be resolved, and the providers will be paid on behalf of the subscribers.
So that plan will be changing, which would alleviate the confusion.
Well, right now, we have no, no intervention on behalf of the retirees, whether they're Medicare primary or they're non-Medicare primary retirees. There's no longer any claim involvement on behalf of the retirees. That was fixed back in March. In June, we are resolving the issue with paying the providers directly rather than paying the members directly on behalf of their, their claims. Right now, the members are being issued the checks on behalf of their claims that we received for the non-Medicare, as well as the Medicare primary retirees.
Is there any questions from the board before we start taking some from our audience here?
I have a question. So what happened with those checks, they went out, but they did not identify what the check was for.
Correct.
So what happened is, you cast that check, you make your payments. Now what happens is, a bill comes in from January and says you owe $100. You go out and you say, now, wait a minute, did I pay all those bills? Is this, is this a bill that I owe? So in that situation, what, what do you do? Do you take the bill and you have to go back and say, okay, you gave me $300, I paid out two something? Most people, most retirees say, okay, I've got these bills, out of the blue. You get one that says, hey, you owe this money from January. Is there a way that they can resolve that?
Understood, one of the comments that we did receive from the retirees, or that I received directly from the retirees, was when they received the check, it could have been a combined check for multiple dates of service. So they had to go back to their explanation of benefits to see how those claims corresponded to the check that they received. That was one of the issues that, that we did hear from the retirees. As of January 30th, we did not, we no longer required the retiree, whether it was Medicare primary, actually, it was only the Medicare primary, because the non-Medicare members, they were being paid all, they were being paid all along. It was the Medicare primary claims that created the system glitch, so to speak. As of January 30th, they no longer had to submit those. So one of the comments was, like I said, that the members didn't know when they received a combined check for all of the services, how to allocate those funds. What our recommendation was to the retirees that I personally spoke with or received correspondence from was that they could always call either Further or Horizon Blue Cross to determine the combination of the check that they received, because we have records on file that shows. Unfortunately, when they received the check, it was just a check number, and it didn't, it didn't have any backup, so to speak. So it could have been a combination of multiple claims that they, that we received, that we issued one single check for. And that would have happened anyway under the Horizon, if Horizon had issued a check. So in other words, in the old plan, if a member went out of network, or if a member went to a network provider, they received an explanation of benefits, and it could have multiple claims on that explanation of benefits, because we received them from various providers, obviously, from multiple dates of service. So the member would have to review that explanation of benefits to see if all of the claims that they, or if all of the services that they incurred were included on that particular claim. So, yes, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, is that it for you? You know, I just had one, one thing to voice, again, I'm not, I know Herb had a little more involvement by way of being a retiree from the county and whatnot, and being on the plan or whatnot. For me, from, from where I sat, the most disappointing part was not that there's a glitch. What I'm very, very upset about is that we had a significant number of seniors come to these meetings, and they also were under the impression that there would be a representative, or you would be returning, or there would be contact that way. And they would come to the meeting and sit here, and for some of them, it's not easy to get here. And I'm not saying you, whoever, representative you, we're not here. And, and Rayanne, who, last time I checked, was a, was a county employee, I don't know if you give out Blue Cross or Blue Shield pins, but she deserves one, because she's an honorary employee of Blue Cross, Blue Shield at this point.
I deal on a regular basis with Rayanne.
Yeah, so, you know, and, and I'm saying that kind of tongue-in-cheek, but it's true. And, and I'm upset at the number of senior citizens and retirees that needed to come here only to find that there was nobody here to answer their questions as promised. It was almost salt in the wound, it was insult to injury, and that's not acceptable.
We have meetings scheduled, and I actually am going to be here tomorrow all day. And that's been, that's been sent out to all of the retirees and notified all the retirees that our availability is going to be all day tomorrow, I'm going to be in this room all day tomorrow for any retirees. Rayanne has been terrific in the sense that some of the retirees weren't even getting their Medicare EOBs, and she has gone upstairs and assisted retirees in showing them how to go online and extract that information if they're not getting it, because there was a lot of confusion. And I welcome the opportunity to come to the county and be assist, be of assistance to the retirees, and, and not only the retirees, but the, the active employees, because the active employees have situations that they don't know how to handle, they get bills from a provider, they've gone out of network, and now they're getting bills for 30, $40,000, and they didn't realize what was going on. So I assist them in how to appeal.
I understand that, but a bigger concern is the system, and when we're talking about the population, we're talking about retirees, some very, very non-user friendly, like hot mess to the nth degree.
Well, I get a lot of telephone calls, and I get a lot of emails from the retirees. But I am available for, you know, again, the, the next meeting that we have is tomorrow, and based on, you know, what the county's needs are, I'm available to come, and, you know, as indicated in previous meetings, I'm available to come every other week or every week, whatever the county feels is necessary for the retiring population as well as the active population.
Thank you.
I think we should keep that, that in mind, because the system's not going to be completely done till, what, June 1st, right?
June.
Towards the end of June. So I think we should keep some regiment of your time here.
Absolutely.
Until that is all, all the bugs are worked out of that.
And I have been invited to each of the commissioners' meetings going forward as well. So I have received those invites. That's the only thing I have recommended from the commission, is to send me an actual invite so that it gets on my calendar. And I am aware of when the meetings are, because I don't live in Sussex County, I live in Warren County, I am a neighbor, but I don't get all the information on Sussex County. So invitation is most welcome, and I would be in attendance of all of the meetings, however you feel is necessary, as well as, you know, implementing additional meetings for me to come and speak with the retirees and the employees.
Perfect. Mr. Space, anything?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Hayden, good? Okay, is there anybody here that would like to ask a question to Anna while she's here? Seeing none, Rayanne, you want to just step up and? Rayanne has some paperwork for the commissioner board, I believe it's from a retiree?
Yes.
If I'm not mistaken.
Thank you.
Do you have one for Anna?
I didn't, because it was addressed.
There you go, Rayanne, pick mine.
So just real quick, I think one of the problems I'm having with this particular situation is, we've been working really hard. He was, he and his wife were here their very first time, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, Anna did take all their paperwork, was keeping in touch, nothing, and this is the letter that they have come up with because they're totally frustrated, and I, there's nothing more I can do. I am a social worker for the Sussex County Senior Residents, that's what I do. I don't mind that, you know, they'll come into me if they're seniors as well, I'm doing the best that I can. I'm pulling EOBs from Horizon, showing them that, how to get onto their EOBs from Horizon, what further is all about, how to do all that, plus doing their Medicare EOBs. So, I'm getting pretty good at this, if you ever need anything, just come to me. But one of the problems was, on this particular day, April 25th, I believe Derek DeCarni, you were on that telephone call?
Yes.
Ron, were you on that telephone call?
Yeah.
I was on the phone.
You were on the phone. Telephone call. And Anna was on the phone call, and specifically Debbie Flunk, he sent it, this person's phone number. He never got received the phone call. So now he came in to me a couple of days ago saying, I cannot make the commissioners' meeting, I have things I got to do, this is still not resolved, please give this to them. So this is what I have.
I do know that the $9.61 was reimbursed, I did check.
They got it, but denied it.
No, I sent it back to further, and further issued a check to them. Okay, I just, I just.
I have to get the paperwork, I left that on.
Okay, but I, but this was one of the issues, the $9.61.
Yeah, they just received a letter a couple over the weekend, and it was denied.
Yeah, there was a previous one.
I have the paperwork.
Okay, because there was one that I previously submitted, yet was a denial that further then adjusted the claim for the $9.61. And as far as I, as far as I am aware from this particular subscriber, that would be the only outstanding that would discuss.
So I might have to use the letter.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, he expected it to come around this date in the year.
I'll get a copy of that tomorrow when I'm there.
It's on here, though. This was specifically asked by him to be addressed to?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'll be here tomorrow, and then I can address it with the individual tomorrow. In between seeing any retirees that are necessary, that will be here.
Anybody else? Good? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, thank you for being here tomorrow. All right, number seven's resolution authorized in the reading of the.
Forgot Ray. Forgot Ray.
No, we're going to do it at the end. I'm sorry. Presentation of the 2022 audit by Ray Serenelli.
If there was a problem, I would have just let you skip right over.
You should have let me.
No, it's a good, it's a good report, so if I do want to talk about it. So this will bring the conclusion to the 2022 year financially. It was a good year for Sussex County financially, I think you all know that by now. Very good thing is that through the audit process, no other financials have changed in any way. In fact, I think this is the first year in a long time that we did not have any journal entries to make to any of the reports. So what you see is what you got, everything that you've been told all along, audited, and it hasn't changed. So to just recap the fund balance and the operating fund, I started the year with a fund balance of 18.9 million, used 7.2 million through the 2022 budget, and generated 8.8 million. Then you was an ending fund balance of 20,534. This is important, it's the indicator of, you know, how you're doing financially, it's at the retained earnings of a business. It just shows that there's financial strength in, in the county's financial statements. So that fund balance of 20,534 is 15.2. So that fund balance of twenty million, five thirty-four is fifteen point two two percent of your operations, which falls exactly in the middle of your fund balance policy. So, you know, you couldn't land in a better spot as far as in terms of your own policies and where you're at financially. So, you know, very good thing for the county. The real drivers behind that fund balance growth is the revenues. You know, high inflation is beating everybody up a little bit, but it also generated some good revenues for the county in 2022. So it was helpful on the revenue side, it did play a little bit on the expense side, it didn't hurt the 2023 budget a little bit on the expense side as well, but at least it helped us in our fund balance position because revenues were higher than we expected. In your trust funds, there's a lot of reserves in there that also bolster your financial position, those are all very strong right now. I think capital continuing to pay down your debt, I know that's very important to the commissioner board, that we continue to look at reducing debt. And just in looking at it, I wanted to see what kind of debt was issued in 2022 compared to what we're looking at doing in 2023. They're doing a similar number of projects with ten million dollars less authorized than the debt. So that's the debt reduction plan in action, which I think is a great thing. So that's your financial position. I do want to talk a little bit about your single audit. So not only do we do an audit of the entire financial statements for the county, but the state and federal government also requires us to do a single audit on your grants, your state and federal grant. And this year, obviously, ARP funding was a big source of funding that was also expended. So it's a new program, the federal government has said it's high risk, we have to look at it, we have to do what's called a single audit, right? We apply specific procedures just to that grant funded. We also audited three other grants that were required to be audited in 2022, and there were no findings related to any of those grants. So, you know, you look at your financial department operating optimally, but also all the departments that get involved in your grants and how they implement the programmatic parts of the grants, they're all doing the right thing, there's no findings we look at, a ton of stuff to make sure that these grants are being run properly, and they are. So no findings there. And then we do have one recommendation in the report, which is a repeat recommendation, which is segregation of duties. In your audit, your outside offices are all included and the, you know, those departments are run by one person for finance. So it's not to say that there's no controls in place in there, just the controls aren't optimal because you only have one person running the show there. We are looking at implementing, you know, other more mitigating controls where hopefully we can use those mitigating controls to get rid of that recommendation in the future. But unfortunately for now, it still exists, so we bring this to your attention, just that in those outside departments, things aren't optimal, but they're still run very, very well. So that's your audit summary unless you guys have any questions for us.
Any question, have any questions?
No.
I think this is the first time the report has been that, that.
It's pretty good every year. I would say this is a pretty exceptional year in 2022, it was very good. No journal entries. I can't think of any clients that received no journal entries. So it was very, very good on the year.
There you go, Ron. Well, thank you much.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving forward. This resolution's authorizing reading of the 2023 Sussex County Budget by the title only in accordance with the NJSA 40A:4-8. I get a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Yardley, seconds. Any discussion?
Oppose.
I'm sorry, voice vote. Do you say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, carries. All right. Eight is the public hearing, it's 2023 Sussex County Budget as approved. Taking a motion to open public hearing for the 2023 Sussex County Budget as approved. I have a motion, voice.
So moved.
Mr. Hayden. Mr. Space, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, carries. Public hearing is now open. Is anyone present to be heard regarding the 2023 Sussex County Budget as approved?
Do I know what's running? Just a quick question.
Just a little bit.
Oh, you give it back to me now. All right, then. On the ten million that was reduced, I don't know the exact wording that the gentleman just gave us when he wanted, but was that monies that were given to the county by the state or the federal government at all? Or is it just a true reduction of, you know, full areas where you reduced budget?
Ray, you want to hit a lap? Or Elka? That's fine.
From ARPA funds, they were addressing plans, and they had a password, people with one capital, putting money in their capital, but that's why they're pulling funding, putting it off the bar.
I'm from Vernon, you stole Elka.
Apparently, there's a lot of thievery going on. All right, is there anybody else? All right, seeing none, can I get a motion that the public hearing be closed?
So moved.
Mr. Space, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Fantasia, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, carries. Resolution A is the final adoption of the 2023 Sussex County Budget as approved, be it resolved by the Board of the County Commissioners of the County of Sussex at the budget herein before set forth and hereby adopted and shall constitute the appropriation of one hundred and twenty-two million, seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and sixteen cents. Thanks. For the purposes stated of the sum therein set forth as appropriations in authorization of the amount of one hundred and one million, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars for the county purposes to be raised by taxation and certification to the county board if taxation in the following summary of general revenues and appropriations. I get a motion to finally adopt the 2023 County Budget as approved.
So moved.
Commissioner Hayden?
Second.
Commissioner Space, seconds. Is there any discussion? That's what I like to hear. All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Very good. Number nine, public sessions from the floor. These public sessions are those wishing to make comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone and state your name, municipality, and agenda topic for the record. I get a motion to open the floor for public comment.
Motion.
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia makes the motion. Commissioner Yardley, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, carries. Is there anyone that would like to make a statement on agenda topics only? All right. I get a motion to close the floor for public comment.
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, Commissioner Space, seconds. All in favor, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, carries. All right, and with ends commissioner's comments, we'll start with Commissioner Hayden.
Okay. The only thing I have is on the library. May 6th, they had Touch a Truck Day in Franklin. Had beautiful weather and a variety of trucks were there, were the main attraction at the Franklin Libraries Community Touch a Truck Event. It was held in the parking lot across from the library at 103 Main Street in Franklin. Almost two hundred people attended and they had an opportunity to get up close and personal with all types of vehicles, including ambulances, fire truck, big farm tractors, just to name a few. These are always fun events stated by Library Director Will Porter. We hosted our very first Touch a Truck Event at the main library way back in 2010 and they've grown from there. Our Franklin branch has a little more basic constraint, but the community makes it totally worth it. Staff at the Franklin branch thanks all the wonderful volunteers who made the day possible, including the Franklin Volunteer Fire Department, Volkville Valley First Aid Squad, Franklin Borough Police, the New Jersey State Forest Fire Service. Michael Clint, a resident of Franklin Borough, was kind enough to bring a farm tractor, which was a big hit. And Franklin branch staff member April Goodnoted, it was a great day for the community to come out, force and enjoy the beautiful weather. Many expressed their appreciation and were thankful to the first responders who were able to attend. And I would like to add that they had a employee day over at the main branch or the branch over in, what is it up there?
Oh, Sussex.
Sussex. Will Porter does an excellent job with these, he's very enthusiastic and we're really lucky to have Will Porter. So I just would like to throw in a little recognition to him. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Commissioner Space?
The Sussex County Division of Senior Services will be recognizing older Americans during its annual Older Americans Month celebration on Friday, May 19th, 2023. The event will be held at the Sussex County Fairgrounds Agricultural Pavilion located at 37 Plains Road in Augusta, New Jersey from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. There will be a variety of fun and educational life enrichment programs for seniors to enjoy. Space is limited, therefore prepaid registration, five dollars a person is required. Registrations received after May 12th, 2023 will be ten dollars per person. Please contact the Sussex County Division of Senior Services at nine seven three five seven nine zero five five nine, extension 1227, or email senior services at sussex nj.us for more information. Division of Health, Public Health Nursing, May is tick-borne disease awareness month in New Jersey. Ticks are a kind of insect that bite and latch on to both humans and other animals, which can cause them to become sick. The Office of Public Health Nursing will be providing health education and free tick kits at various locations throughout the county during the month of May to promote awareness about tick-borne diseases and educate residents about how to protect themselves and their families. To learn more about the health education schedule for tick-borne diseases or the various services available through the Office of Public Health Nursing, call nine seven three five seven nine zero five seven zero. And I had received a call from former mayor John Nuss, and he's actually called me a couple of times on this, and I've heard other residents request this too. They're looking for a four-way stop. Chris, this is like right up here. A four-way stop at the intersection of Libertyville Road, Route 650 and Route 519 in Wantage. You know, there was a fatal there two years ago. And, I mean, with my husband being a first responder, we've been there several times to that intersection.
And Bill Copanow is doing research on that.
He is. Okay, so we'll, we'll get back to him on that.
Actually brought up by Mr. DeGroot over there.
Okay.
Six months ago, sorry.
Okay, yeah.
He is, they are.
I just got the call again.
Yeah, yeah.
Just checking.
It does take a while, so.
And then at our last commissioner meeting, Mr. Tappin brought up about Hope Akong wanting the license plate readers on our county signs. And I received a call, I don't know if you heard from Councilman Hoffert Camp about setting up a presentation for the commissioner board?
Yep.
So that if, you know, this way we can have the full understanding of what they're looking for.
Perfect.
And we're not just like, you know, making estimated guesses.
I'll take that out of my report.
Yes.
We're good.
I think that we're upset about my comment about more Big Brother, but when you're not presented the whole picture, you know, of instant reaction, you know.
Right.
They'll have to like persuade a little bit more on that one. But thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Fantasia?
To start off my comments, I first like to say that my heart almost stopped with Commissioner Hayden talking about the library and Will Porter. And my question is, did you get a library card yet?
If you've ever seen my home office?
Yeah.
I have a huge book collection.
I love this story. I used to be the liaison of the library and now you're digging the library, I could tell.
Big book guy. I can't use iPads, I can't, I just, I need a book.
All right, so I'll start out with the Health Department tonight. We are way low in COVID cases as we're approaching the warm weather. We're averaging about two or three cases a day here in Sussex County. For hospitalizations, none in May. In April, we had fourteen, March, we had thirteen, so you kind of see the trajectory is really going in a great, great direction. And there's also a low level activity of flu, no RSV or influenza A outbreaks at all in the county. So we're definitely going in the right direction there. As far as communicable disease investigations, in the month of April, there were twelve reportable diseases investigated, having nothing to do with COVID. There were four foodborne illnesses, one foodborne and/or waterborne illness, two vectorborne or tickborne diseases, one bacterial infection, one hepatitis C, two pneumonia by strep, and one strep. So that was a communicable disease investigation. I can comment on the ticks. I know spring has sprung, I pulled the first tick off me yesterday. So it is time, so please check yourself very carefully if you are outside frequently, if you enjoy being outdoors, outdoor activity. The Office of Mosquito Control is doing an informational poster contest for Sussex County High School Graphics Arts students for a prevent mosquito bite standalone retractable banner design. So the design will showcase the effective ways of protection such as insect repellent, covering up, protective clothing, et cetera. The banner will be displayed at all mosquito public outreach events because if you recall, there's some funding in there. Sussex County has an extraordinarily robust mosquito, Office of Mosquito Control, we kind of are the gold standard in the state. Some counties don't have much, you know, and the state tries to put a little bit of heat on them to become part of a consortium, a statewide consortium, there's something going on with that. Here in Sussex County, we receive accolades and we know Paige Lachbrenner also is always tapped as the expert statewide, especially considering Sussex County has been the unfortunate location for some of the more severe and rare illnesses that are spread by mosquitoes. The counties received significant rainfall over the past three weeks, which has caused flooding many parts of the county. The Office of Mosquito Control conducted an aerial granular application, so no spray, just the actual granules, on April 26th with uninhabited wetland areas in Vernon, Wantage, Hardeston, Sussex Borough, Hope Akong, Newton, Hampton Township, Andover, and Lafayette. Another aerial application is scheduled for Wednesday, May 10th through Thursday, May 11th within the same areas. Please make note that these applications are not for control of adult mosquitoes, they're little granules that kill the larva. The pilot is not applying any product or aerosols at this time. And if you have any questions, you can just go on the website, very, very easy to find out the spraying schedule and everything that they would be doing. Residents of Sussex County should anticipate a very high adult mosquito activity as temperatures warm up, all that wet weather that we've had. If you notice in your neighborhoods or around businesses, you notice any standing water, please, please call the Office of Mosquito Control because they can come and address that. Now, we also test diseases in adult mosquitoes for mosquito-borne illness, and that begins on Monday, May 15th. So they set the traps, they go out, they bring them back, they do samples. So a pretty complex but really, really thorough situation. On May 1st, I attended a meeting with the Sussex County Arts and Heritage Council and a representative from the New Jersey Council on the Arts to go over what some of the projects are. The organization experienced somewhat of good growing pains, I would say. They have a lot of board members and they have a lot of volunteers who are trying to mesh with the executive director and kind of define roles, responsibilities, and ways to get certain projects across the finish line. I did give them information that we discussed last time about ARPA funds and two avenues, the business grant, as well as the board was requesting for them to submit anything for consideration up to a threshold. They asked what the deadlines were. I said for the business grant, there is no hard deadline, but I did explain when the money runs out, it runs out. I suggested a window of thirty days for them to get that in, and for the other, anywhere between thirty and sixty days in total for our consideration. So that should be coming back to us. Last night, I attended a meeting at the request of the mayor and deputy mayor of Hardeston Township. It was their Board of Education, they're doing something good. They're, I believe, the last standing school that did not explore the idea of armed security in their school. Now, I went to attend and it was important for me. I used to be a Hardeston resident, I was also an employee. I started my career in education at Hardeston School, my children went there for five years. And when we were there, there was armed, an armed school resource officer. What we found is that that had kind of gone the way of the dodo, so they reapproached it again. They applied for, they received rather a security grant and they're looking to speak with the chief of police, the municipal governing body, and the Board of Education to come together in the best interest of the students. It was great. It was such a good example of all agencies working together to move something closer to move something closer to the finish line that I think is going to be really intelligent. Um, the Deputy Mayor spoke in favor of, I spoke in favor of, the Mayor Brian Kaminsky spoke in favor of, uh, that the meeting, you know, a fair amount of residents there and teachers there. And I think everyone's on board, and I think it's a really, really important step, uh, you know, that they join the, the Legion of Sussex County Schools who do have that. And last but not least, just a quick, uh, one piece of legislation out of District Twenty-four is sponsored by Senator Steve Ohrho. It established the crime of sexual extortion. Um, he's pleased, and I'm reading from their press release, pleased to announce that this legislation was signed into law today to protect minors from sexual victimization in New Jersey. We will now be able to identify, convict, and punish the perpetrators who engage in this despicable behavior. This law upholds our commitment as legislators to ensure that justice will be served for victims of this heinous abuse. So this focused on specifically sexual extortion, when a victim's threatened or coerced into engaging in a sexual activity or providing explicit material to the offender. So it typically begins on online sites, apps, games, and children are specifically targeted by this. Um, the bill S six five three criminalized sexual extortion to the third degree with a penalty of up to five years imprisonment and a fifteen thousand dollar penalty. If a victim is under the age of eighteen, carries a penalty of up to ten years in prison with a hundred and fifty thousand dollar fine. So it definitely uh definitely focused heavier on the young victims, which is how it should be, and the law will make perpetrators of these acts pay a steeper price for the damage that they inflict. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Deputy Director Yardley?
Well, thank you. Um, a couple things from the Health Department, the, and the Division of Senior Services. Design the pin contest for the twenty-third annual salute to military veterans. Each year, a patriotic uh pin is designed and a contest is held. And uh the pins are given to all the veterans during the event, uh, which will be, uh, I'm sorry, it's uh, the pin design, I'm sorry, is the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and you're encouraged to submit a design. Uh, pin design is June thirtieth. Um, Women's Health Clinic, May eleventh, men's screening, Wednesday, uh, May seventeenth, Child Health, May twenty-third, and Health Check, which is any open to anyone, uh, would be on May twenty-third, and that's all at the, uh, those events are up at Wheatworth Road with the Public Health Nursing. Uh, in addition to that, I attended the Association of Counties um uh this past, uh, last week, and uh it was a great event. Um, they had a lot of uh participants, participants there. And just to go along with um, uh, Ms. Fantasia was talking about our mosquito commission, um, there was a, a law that was being proposed that every county would have to have a mosquito commission. Uh, the Association of Counties uh testified on Monday against that. Why that law was proposed uh was, no one really knew why it was proposed, but there are some counties that, I guess, are having mosquito problems, and the solution at the state is to set up a regulation. And if we had a commission, that would mean we would appoint people there, they would have their own budget, not subject to review, and if I'm wrong, just let me know, um, Doug. But it's a commission which would have the ability to tax for mosquito, that type of thing. What we have is a mosquito department is under control under the Health Department. Uh, and we have set up in two thousand and fifteen, we set up a trust account, and that was in the event we have an emergency and we need additional money. We don't have to do an emergency appropriation. That money exists there, it stays there, it's not used for regular um mosquito. It's only for an emergency, we, we have a bad year, we're running out of money. So that's with that account, and that does take authorization from the, uh, from us. But the Association is opposed, Association uh was opposed to that. Um, I also um went to several seminars. The Board of Public Utilities, uh, Public Energy Efficiency and Renewable Energy Emissions Program, um, they'll come and evaluate counties, county buildings, uh, schools, uh, vote tech, the college, uh, fire departments, uh, EMT department, uh, emergency squad departments, and they'll do a, um, an evaluation, energy evaluation, and they will do that for free. Or uh JCPN L, who they're our partner up here, would come and evaluate that. And there are, um, they'll subsidize um a hundred percent, up to a hundred thousand dollars for those inspections. So if there's a cost or something for inspection, this is a grant program through the BPU. Um, I think the county, I think this program, I remember, may have been done ten, fifteen years ago, and there may have been some benefit here. I think that's something we should look into. Um, there's a funding to help implement um the um recommendations, and I, I think we're in a good place because we have a firm that's going to be doing um our.
PR.
No, not the PR, but the um.
Grants.
Grants.
Oh, grants, yeah.
So I think we're, I think we're in a good, a good spot now to get some grants to, you know, maybe uh, whether we need, whether it's fern, it's everything, it's furnaces, it's electricity, it's insulation, things of that nature to reduce the cost of electric. Um. Okay. I uh, I attended a, a, where was that, there's no grant funding, okay. Um, I attended the Camden County Development, uh, Camden County um development um roundtable program for um the settlement for the um drugs, um, yeah, the opium, I'm sorry, the opium settlement. And um they developed a countywide program, created an addictive task force, uh, and allowed outreach through the community. So they've done some of that stuff. Um, I also attended a deferred compensation retirement program uh for employees. Um, gave all of that information to Ron. A program on community justice in New Jersey, Jersey, which is an alternative to the critical legal system. What is this? Well, apparently there's federal money, which is, and is a grant program where they will pay you to hire people to assist people that have criminal activity to re-enter the um workforce and the community. And I decided to go to that because of, I said, you know, this has got to be interesting, what is this about? And um it's a voluntary program at this point, and there is talk where New Jersey, uh, each county may have to have a um re-entry person for people coming out of jail. So I went and found out that this is a federal program, and it really helps, um, I think, urban situations, but it is available to the counties, and there were some counties there interested in, in looking into that. I also got to see Senator Ohrho uh receive his award. He was awarded uh legislator, legislature, legislator. You know how that is going there, Chris, right? Legislator of the year, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, I just got a couple of updates. Uh, replacement of Bridge Q six, this is carrying Main Street or the Walk Hill River. Something I talked about last meeting, that Phase One is now done. I was installing the bypass piping on relocating of the existing sixteen-inch water transmission. The next phase is the overhead wires, and then Phase Three, this is important. If you live in Sparta or drive through Sparta, uh, Main Street will be fully open during Phase Two. So you'll be able to go in and out until they start Phase Three. And that's when they'll rip out the culvert, put a new culvert in. Um, so I'll keep you up to date with that. Sussex County Vision, uh, the Vision of Public Works, they're doing some tree removal. EPW Vernon District crews, this is the tree crew with the removal of large ash trees. Obviously, you know how they're dying in the county on five sixty-five in Vernon Township, who's utilized a new mini excavator and hook lift truck to assist with removal of the dead trees. So they're getting to play with their toys, which is nice. Um, I've been busy bee, I guess, going around and speaking to uh our county workers, our administrators and whatnot. So I, I got to sit with Mike Strata, Ron and I sat with the sheriff to go over where we're at with the sheriff's building and the new building um that we're looking to do over at the OEM. Um, came to a nice compromise on some, some structures, which he's working out with Keith from Facilities. Uh, with that, I asked to get a survey, so the RFPs for a survey, they have five companies, six, five companies that want to do the survey. So they'll put that RFP out to figure out what we own, access to that jail, and, you know, continue to get rid of that as soon as possible, which will save the taxpayer lots of money, about a hundred and nineteen thousand a year. Um, so that was with Bill, again, Mike's happy, we're, that those RFPs for those buildings should be back. They're going to have a meeting on June second, uh, Mike and Keith, to go over the aesthetics of what this building will look like. Um, I was at the Sussex County Culinary opening, which was very nice. Um, I think Commissioner Yardley and Commissioner Space were, were there as well. Um, good facility, it was at the old McGuire car dealership over there. I, I sat with Sean McGuire night next to me, and uh brought me back to when I took out a car for the day. And went a little sideways with a Corvette around the green, but um it was a good opening, and they're looking, looking to do some dinners and whatnot as, as time progresses. Then we went to the Crime Stoppers. Herb is the commissioner, Commissioner, Commissioner Herb Yardley is the commissioner of the Crime Stoppers, which is always a good event, uh, held by Mike Stradin Company. I think everybody was there, right?
I was at McGovern's, Judge McGovern's retirement.
So I think Mr. Hayden and Yardley were there. A hundred and thirty-five people attended, which was huge. Um, I believe seventy-five people last year, Herb, if I'm not right. So it doubled up, they always do a good job, uh, that was nice. Um, Lorraine Hents is just about done with our move. So Senior Services was on the second floor, now they're on the first floor. We don't have the best elevators around, so when seniors come, it's nice for them to just walk to the first floor. Um, so then um Employee Services was moved upstairs, and then the Commissioners will have a little office in the back where they are. And that, that should be done in a couple of weeks, painted and, and everything, so I appreciate that. Also went down to the Fleet Garage, I talked to them a little bit, we talked about getting them their tools, um, which should be coming soon. Uh, and we also, the most important thing I was checking up on was the Fleet Wash, the mobile Fleet Wash, that we were buying with ARPA money, which is a big, big deal, um, because we are constantly dealing with the salt on our trucks. And it's, it's killing the, the, their catalytic converters, your, 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 your exhaust, and it, it's, it's a lot of money. I, they're, they're saying it's around two hundred thousand dollars in salt damage per year. So with this, you spend a little bit of money and should save it a long haul. So that's in the works as well. That's all I have. All right, moving on. Uh, approval over the consent agenda, there is none. Number twelve is the approval of minutes, uh, we just have the regular meetings from April twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-three. Can I get a motion to?
That one's, they were tabled, remember?
That was, I'm sorry. Should've took that off. Uh, thirteen is appointments and our registrations, there is none. Fourteen, um, is resolutions, A through G, and I and J. Keep in mind, we took out H. Uh, can I get a motion to adopt resolutions, A through G, and I and J? Commissioner Space, Commissioner Fantasia, seconds. Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Uh, Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Number fifteen is awards of contracts and change orders and bids. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Um, can you read first, please? The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the award of contract, change orders, bids, consisting of various proposed resolutions, and determine the adoption of the said resolutions is and will further the public interest. Now, I will take a motion.
Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Commissioner Yardley, second from Commissioner Fantasia. Any discussion on this?
I just would like to say that um it was very, very good to see the parts, uh, the tools and parts and whatnot as part of the ARPA funds. I know that was a little bit to get across the finish line. Thank you, Chris, and Ron, and, you know, Elka, I know that was not an easy fix, but I think it is a completely valid use of the ARPA funds for, for that department.
Thanks, thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right, can I get a motion to adopt resolutions, A through I?
We have motions, we just go through a roll, roll call.
Might have been out of contract last night.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
All right, number sixteen is financial, uh, we only have one bills list, that's the payment of bills from May tenth, twenty twenty-three. I get a motion to pay the bills list.
So moved.
Commissioner Space, Commissioner Hayden, seconds. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
All right, number seventeen is personnel, there is none. Eighteen, Administrator Report.
Thank you, Mr. Director Young, real quickly, and most importantly, thank you. And I wanted to thank the other two that just left, but the heart of this audit, trust me, is the environment those three set. So um with that in mind, um, ring the bell, with the bill list, we just went over a million dollars in small business loans. So that, when those checks go out tomorrow, will be over a million dollars distributed through the County of Sussex to the small businesses. And we've hit seventeen of the municipalities, so it's a good deal. Um, I want to, I was part of an initial startup meeting with the DOT on a fairly big project that's coming up, starting in two thousand and twenty-five, and that is uh a total re, road resurfacing in Vernon. It's going to be from uh Pleasant Valley Road to Maple Grange. It's going to involve three major uh catch basins either being repaired or replaced, its major pavement, repavement, its major uh guardrails, and it is the new and improves uh public uh sidewalks, that ADA compliant sidewalks. So it's going to be a huge project. The DEP of permitting will be done by July of this year with the expectation of that, that, that repair to that area starting sometime in the summer of two thousand and twenty-five. It's going to be quite the, quite the project. We had Vernon Police there, we had a lot of people in this meeting to, to start the planning activities of what time of the season that they want to shut that road down, because it's very critical to Vernon at the time, at certain times of the year, their traffic that they get. So it's quite the project, particularly around the um scheduling part of that. And just real quickly, we mentioned it a little bit, but we did have our first meeting with our public relations uh contractor. Um, there's some things that, that they've asked from us from a uh data collection point of view about our website and what things are people looking for and those types of things. We have started the process with them of giving that type of information to them so that we can start up and start using them um very proactively. So with that, that's all I have, Commissioner.
Perfect, much. Nineteen, County Council Report.
Court dates approaching on our Oprah request of the state, they continue to provide only what they want, not what you've requested, uh, to try to shed some light on what went on in your, on your nursing homes here in Sussex. But uh we are continuing, as you've been diligent, uh, to try to force them to provide some answers, so.
They think we're going to stop?
I don't know what they think, I think they think by providing little bits and pieces here and there, you'll just eventually, it'll wear you down, yeah, and maybe they do, but uh, the court date's looming, so.
Okay, perfect, excellent. Uh, twenty is unfinished business, do we have any unfinished business? Twenty-one's new business, is there any new business? All right. Twenty-two, public session from the floor. This public session, for those wishing to make a, to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics, please line up at the microphone and state your name and municipality for the record. I get a motion to open the floor for public comment.
So moved.
Commissioner Space, you have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Yardley, any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose,赞成, carries. Is there anybody who would like to make a statement on non-topic agenda?
Alan Henderson, Lafayette Township, I'd just like to comment regarding your report on Hardeston did away with the armed security guard, if I understand you correctly.
Oh, no, they didn't do away with, well, back in the day, they must have. When I reached out to them, they said they had one, uh, we know his name. And then uh the report back to me was it kind of just disappeared, I don't know what that means. And now they're up to re-put somebody in there.
I should tell you, being a Hardeston police officer for thirty years, there has never been an armed security guard in Hardeston. We were, we had an officer that did walk through every single solitary day that still is in place.
Officer Ziccarelli, are you referring to?
Absolutely, I was the supervisor.
Yeah, that's who.
Hardeston has never had an armed security guard, ever.
That's what, like I said.
So this day comes by the wayside, kind of bothers me, as a retired guy, with so much effort, walking somebody through that school every day. And we're fortunate, Lafayette, they even walk through Lafayette daily.
Yeah.
So I want to make sure that's clear to the public, the fact that that statement is not.
Okay, well, thank you for the clarification again, that came from, directly from the mayor of Hardeston, who said he was told it went by the wayside.
Never been by the wayside.
In his meeting. Fair, thank you.
Everybody else?
Good evening, uh, my name is Helen Heckman, I'm from Newton, and I wanted to inquire as to whether or not there has been any update whatsoever on that you can report on the Dennis Library, the status of the um grant for three million dollars and the matching funds of, what is it, three point five, and then three point five matching funds, and whether or not there are cost overruns, and whether you've made any decisions uh as to whether or not you're going to go ahead with the project, and whether or not you've had the town engineer, or the county engineer go through uh the Dennis Library again with an eye toward doing something about that.
I can't speak to the, to the staffing part, I'll defer, I'd have to defer to the, to the administrator as far as who's been out, who hasn't, on the legal side, that there.
On the legal side, the director's waiting for an opinion from me, which we're still piecing together, but I hope to have budget kind of interfered in some of the things that have come in, but I hope to have an answer for them soon. But I, I will tell you, and what I was going to comment on only, was Commissioner Yardley, myself, we did take that tour, he brought me over there last week, and we went through it, and we're looking at some stuff and some ideas and whatnot, so, but like, like our attorney said, that we're just out of stance at the moment.
Well, when do you think we're going to have an opinion about it? I went to the Newton Town Council the other night, very excited about, you know, getting that project up and going, and-
It's not their fault, it's mostly mine, I mean, the director's been kind of pushing to get something in, we've got just a couple of holes to fill, in terms of, I haven't got, some answers I haven't gotten, in terms of potential clawbacks with monies, but hopefully sometime by beginning of June.
Beginning of June?
Yeah.
Okay. What's the scenario?
Just me having time putting an opinion together, that's really it, getting some answers from the other stakeholders.
Okay. Okay. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, it's, well, I think, not muddy the waters a bit, but I think we've asked for several professionals to take a look over there, so.
There's a, there's a lot more to it.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot more.
That's what I said, I can always speak to my end.
So I just think, just be patient with that, and that, let the engineers and everybody look at everything and then come up with a report for us. I think that's what we're looking for.
And, and just so you know, too, this problem stemmed from inflation, so that building was X amount of dollars, and it went up at least 20%. That was, if you want to know what the snag is, that was the snag, original snag.
Okay.
So, you know, everything's been going up, as you know.
And from my understanding, so that, that has implications, because there's matching funds, so, you know, does that obligate the county to have to put up more money than they may have originally anticipated, and if they don't, or if they only spend part of it, you know, are there clawbacks? So it's not as simple as just simply interpreting a contract and giving them an answer.
Okay. I just, I just, I just don't understand why it takes so much time.
Government.
Yeah. Well, I got a call, you know, from somebody from the American, Americans with Disabilities, and they're now, and they called me, and I said, all I'm as concerned is citizen, you know, like, maybe you'll be getting calls from the country.
Okay.
So just, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm Fiona Lloyd, just wanted to thank the commissioners for approving the budget tonight, it's a lot of work on all of our parts, and I think everybody in the county that worked on it, from all divisions, the departments, did a wonderful job. I also want to thank my staff, even though two of them-
They bailed.
For all the work that they did, the single audit, I have no recommendations, I attest to Rob Micus, he's our fiscal management director, and he does such a great job with grants. And the other thing I wanted to comment on was our fire and EMS grant system, that was approved, like, through our, one of the resolutions, I forget what the number was. That information, we're looking to put on the website either tomorrow or Friday, so we can try, I have to work with IT to get the survey, which is the application on the website. So if there's anybody in the audience who is a fire or EMS on the team, they can look, and they'll have the application and what's required, that's all, there's also the resolution, so they can look on the website to see what's required. So make sure you have everything available before you go online. It's an easier process than we'll take them anyway, get moving or getting them every Friday.
Can you email us when this is in operation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And it should be, I want to try to have it on the landing page, near the small business.
Take my space.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for everything. Thank you for the hard work, you and your staff.
You put a lot of time in, and we appreciate it.
Lots of time, lots of aggravation.
A lot of aggravation.
Oh, boy. Is there anybody else? Come on up.
I met you at my wife's return.
I did, that's right, you looked familiar.
That's right. My name is Dennis Daniels, and I'm from Hampton Township, and, I just wanted to speak on behalf of commissioners to really try to support the expansion of the Dennis branch. They serve wide services to Andover Township, in the southern part, there are a few, several townships, actually. Freedon Township, like Andover has 6,000 residents, and I can find if you needed to, how many go to the library there. Freedon has 3,200 residents, Stillwater, 3,900 residents, Green Township, 3,600 residents, and Lafayette, 2,500 residents, and southern part of Hampton. Pretty close, like Newton sports through roads, and all those, winning Freedon and so forth, it would be easier for the library. Also, with the proposed addition, they would have a community room which could be open to the public, very similar to Sussex Wange, when the library's closed, so it could serve other community activities that Newton may want, and so forth, so I'm kind of giving you a, also, it would be handy and accessible, which I'm just flying with this thing, I went to a place and I thought they had an elevator, and then I could drag this thing up there. So just from that standpoint, Newton's the county seat, and we've expanded or started from scratch with the Sussex Wange Library and built that, and it became, became a good place in the June. You go there, you'll see they have a community room there that's set up the same way, where it's a, it has use for groups, community groups they can use if the library's not, or even if it is open, that, that would, you know, that needs to be, and that would, it really helped enhance the services of the township. There are programs, the library-
One minute.
... just from personal experience, has, that like one branch will have one, and it's a completely different one than another, so for seniors, let's say, with social security or something like that, or Medicare, they'll give those programs, and that would better facilitate that with a new addition. There's only one meeting room up on the second floor, and there's only one bathroom.
Yes.
And it's built as a house, so if it could have an elevator to go up and down, that would help like you do here. So those are just my comments, and just for disclosure, my wife just retired from the library.
Fifty years.
Yeah, I'm on Hampton, I'm on the Hampton Township planning board, just, just so you know.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, have a motion to close the floor for public comment, return to regular business?
So moved.
Mr. Hayden, you have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same carries. All right, reminders, please check the county's website, www.sussex nj.us for our meeting schedules, and we have no excessive session. I get a motion to adjourn the meeting. Mr. Hayden, Mr. Space, second, we will have no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned, Act 803.